Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of the Troutdale Planning Commission for Wednesday, October 21st, 2020. And if we can have a roll call, please.
Of course. Commissioner Wittrin?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Wadilla?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Mamonie?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Priggett?
Here.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Here.
Great. Chair Stephenson?
Here. Okay, with that, we have a quorum, and at this time, I would like to ask everyone to stand for the pleasure of leaving, and Commissioner Wadilla will be leaving us this evening.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America, citizens of the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Is there any members of the public that would be wishing to speak to the Planning Commission on a non-agenda item this evening?
Mr. Chair, given that we have a large preponderance of members of the public tonight, I figured it would be of interest to the commissioners to understand why. There are a host of students from the University of Oregon, and I believe Professor John Arroyo, I think I saw him on there. I'm missing one of the other professors, my apologies, but just wanted to extend a welcome to them, and thank you for coming. The class that you see here, they are part of what we call the Sustainable City Year Program class. It's a collaboration this year between the City of Troutdale and the University of Oregon, where several students in a variety of disciplines, but especially in the planning and policy, public management field, are helping the city to work on a variety of topics and small projects. So we are really happy to have them on board, and this is an example of them seeing the inside of how things get made around here.
Okay. It's great to have you. I wish we were all together, but different times right now. So welcome, everyone.
But I'm not sure if that is everybody else who's on the call, if there's other members of the public that wanted to share anything at that point.
Anyone wishing to? No?
I don't know.
Okay. Okay, with that, we will move on. Everyone received a copy of the minutes from August 11th?
Yes.
And we will start with Commissioner Wilcox.
Okay. Chair Stephenson? I have a few, not too many. Didn't find any misspellings or typos. That's really good. I don't see Ms. Farrell here. But my first question was one of her quotes. Page four, the paragraph that starts, Mr. Damgan showed about three lines up from the bottom of that paragraph, the line that starts recently to FedEx's application, and in that case, a pedestrian walkway did apply. I questioned that statement, because I don't think it did, it did not apply, and I listened to the audio, and it was kind of breaking up, so I couldn't tell whether Ms. Farrell said "did apply" or "didn't apply." And I'd sent her an email to clarify, but didn't hear back from her, so that was one positive correction. Shall I go on, or do you want to deal with that one?
Go ahead and go on. We'll deal with that one.
Look at that again, yeah.
Okay. The very next paragraph, the end of the second line down, it says, "along Harlow Road and Portland-owned areas." I think that should say Port of Portland-owned. And the very next line after that, at the end, it says Historic Columbia Highway, should be Historic Columbia River Highway. And that's it for page four. Page five, third line down, the line that starts with wheelhouse, wheelhouse to recruit additional land screening. I think that should be landscape screening. That's all I had on page five. Page six, paragraph, it's toward the middle, that starts Ms. Glance. Second line from the bottom. The sentence that starts, Chair Stephenson agreed and added that tractor trailers would also not be included, and clarified that Amazon uses box trucks. I think that's, might have been two different discussions regarding what Amazon was doing on the Apollo plumbing property, and whether we're allowed semi-tractors in storage, so I need to be clarified a bit. I've got two page sixes here. Let me see. Okay.
Mr. Wilcox?
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you repeat the edit that you had prior to that Amazon box truck comment? I think it was on the previous page or further up, just...
Okay, on page five, the third line down, should be landscape rather than land screening.
Require additional land screening. Do you need landscape screening, or...
Right, that's what I'd suggest, landscape screening.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, then, bottom paragraph on page six, third line from the bottom. I'll start in the line before, Mr. Wilcox said that the way staff uses portable is so widely ranging that it can include RV storage on Marine Drive. And what I was referring to was the Chinook RV storage in Fairview, so what I'd add, I'd add in RV storage as on Marine Drive. And let's see, one more on the top of page seven. This was another question from Ms. Farrell. Just go three lines up from the bottom of the first paragraph. Additionally, conditional uses expire while variances do not. That seemed to be an accurate transcription of what she said, but I questioned, "conditional uses expire." Maybe that was maybe the wrong term to use. I think maybe...
They technically do if they're not acted upon.
Okay, I thought maybe she might have been referring to them being non-transferable. So Chris, you're saying that if they're not, if the applicant doesn't go through with it, that might be what she's referring to?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have for that date, thank you.
Okay. I think the one question is that first one on four, do we want to verify that? Approve it pending verification of that statement?
The one on four, was that with the FedEx situation? No, I think a pedestrian walkway does not apply, I can confirm that.
Okay.
So the word "not" should be in there. I'm sorry, I was working off an earlier draft on the sheer screen.
And what about the other one on six?
One moment. Can you repeat the one on six? I'm sorry, again, I was on a different draft, so... The location again?
That was a paragraph, correct, Paul? I've got that right?
It was about the Amazon box trucks?
Yeah. Well, are we talking about my statement about box trucks?
That's what I need clarification on, I didn't capture what the edit was.
Paul, Paul, can you verify that for me? Are we talking about my statement about box trucks?
Yes, I was.
Okay. My statement about box trucks was regarding the property on Harlow.
Right.
Only.
Okay, do you wish to add that statement then, to...
Yeah, that it was...
On the Harlow Road property?
Okay. Anyone else have anything?
That was a small one.
Okay.
First line on the page four, the sentence starts at the bottom of three. From his own experience with a storage facility adjacent to residential zoning, it only becomes an issue, should be singular.
Got it.
Thanks.
Did you have one, Mr. Mamonie?
Mr. Chabnos, I don't know, I have one for the August 19 meeting, no, for the August 11 meeting.
Okay, okay. Anyone else for August 11th? Okay. In a motion as corrected?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the minutes as amended on August 11th.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the meeting minutes of August 11th, 2020, as amended. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Okay. Now, moving on to August 19th. Mr. Wilcox, you are back up, sir?
Okay. Let's see. Not sure I have any actual corrections, I had a couple statements I questioned, though. On page two, the paragraph that starts in terms of future housing, the last of that paragraph, it says Troutdale is no longer a bedroom community with the addition of FedEx and Amazon. And I think from the Housing Needs Consultants statistics, if I remember correctly, I could be wrong, but I remember hearing a figure of 5% of people lived and worked in Troutdale. So I think Troutdale, on that basis, would still be a bedroom community, even though it's, you know, could be considered a major employer also. Then the next paragraph starts with staff, I saw a figure of 1093, 1,093 new dwelling units needed. I don't remember seeing that figure anywhere else before in the past. Okay, that's all I had for page two. Page four, the second paragraph that starts with Mr. Mamonie, the very last sentence. Let's see. I won't read the whole sentence. It says, "The Planning Commission makes a policy that there is an opportunity to go above and beyond just adding different architectural styles." I don't know whether that entire paragraph is a quote from Mr. Mamonie, but I think what he intended to say was housing types, you know, single-family versus duplexes versus apartments, et cetera. Architectural type is more ranch style versus colonial versus whatever. Architecture is like appearance type difference.
That would be replacing the word then "styles" with "type," because I believe that was the spirit and intent of his comments, but he's on the line, of course, to confirm that.
Okay.
Replace with styles.
Replace styles with types.
Type. You okay with that, Commissioner Mamonie?
I'm somewhat fine, Mr. Chair. The intent, what I was trying to say was that by adding, of course, those numbers, 40% of the people in Troutdale spending more than one-third, that we should not just focus on high-end homes, but we should also be, you know, much larger scope of approach, try to offer homeownership a much larger wider audience. That was the intent of the law. I understand that, so I'm fine with what it is right now, that's...
Okay. Okay, back to you, Commissioner Wilcox.
Okay. On to page seven, the paragraph that starts Mr. Wittrin, second line down, to say, "Recognize affordable housing is best located within one-quarter of a transit line," should be one-quarter mile. That's an easy fix. I think I've come to the end, that'll be it, thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Wilcox. Okay, and anyone else have any corrections?
Yes. Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ramone?
Yes, on page four, the paragraph before the last one, they start with Chair Stephenson, ask Mr. Mamonie, and yes. And that is confusing, because I was, actually, it was the first part of the answer was a written note, a written statement, and then I elaborated, and I think the two sentences got together. So for your convenience, I'm just going to read to you the sentence the way it should be, and letting you know when the words should be strike out, or it should be introduced as a new language. So...
Okay.
Chair Stephenson asked Mr. Mamonie if that answer is questioned, and he said yes. However, and I would like to be clear that, I will strike "he," and I will have Mr. Mamonie, so we are clear who's talking here, things that as a city ambassador, I will strike "they," and I would add the Planning Commission, that was my clear intent. Strike out "they" and add "Planning Commission." Should exercise foresight, and now adding after "and," should encourage home ownership. And then also add "as." After that, if you'd encourage a model, "as." And then you have it, it would be, strike these in genus, that was the thought that came later. Instead, strike these in genus, add "wrong," "not," because the way it is, is she said exactly the opposite of what I meant to say. "Not."
Okay.
So it would be wrong. Instead of strike out these in genus, and add "wrong."
Okay.
And then, yeah, and then "not to," instead of "to not," "not to." And the "not" is actually new, the "wrong" and "not" are new words introduced right now, because they omitted the "not" that changed completely the meaning of the word.
Be wrong, not to address.
That is correct. Wrong, not to address the 40% population, we cannot easily afford housing. I would strike completely the final one, especially since this is true also in neighboring cities. I was going a completely different direction, but that sentence that had, does not add anything to the main point that I was trying to do, so it was completely a different thought. And so I would strike that, especially since this is true also of neighboring cities.
We're striking?
Can you repeat that last portion about, are we striking one more portion, Mr. Mamonie?
Yes, the sentence that it was written at the end was, "especially since this is true also neighboring cities," I would strike it completely.
Strike it completely?
Yeah.
So just end the sentence after "afford housing"?
That is correct.
Like that?
That is correct.
We talked a part about neighboring cities altogether?
Especially since this is true for neighbors. There was a thought, I was elaborating something else later on, and somehow they got blended together. And he adds nothing to the point, to the main point about, but then "not," forgetting the "not" was really changing 180-degree the direction of my point.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we got that.
Okay, anything else, Commissioner Ramone?
No, we are fine, thank you very much.
Okay. Anyone else, corrections for... Okay. Commissioner Glance?
Page four, last paragraph, first sentence, I would strike everything that's after "tops." So Ms. Glance said she would like to say high-minded executive housing, so that it wouldn't be confused with apartments with marble countertops, period. Perfect, thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, just a quick erotic correction, just seeing the name there, Cambor, Ms. Cambor, that's not exactly her spelling, we can just make those sixes across the board to her correct spelling.
All right. Motion to approve?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Priggett?
I move that we approve the minutes for August 19th, as amended.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve meeting minutes for Wednesday, August 19th, 2020, as amended. All those in favor? If you're probably saying aye?
Aye.
Most? Okay, that passes. Okay. And now we are moving on to tonight's main event. Something we've always wanted to do is create a new zoning district.
Careful what you wish for, Mr. Chair, I would say that. Okay. Just one moment while we pull up some screens here for you, we'll get going here momentarily.
Kind of a neat opportunity, actually.
Yeah, to the students who are on the call, usually Planning Commission meetings are not going to be this entertaining, so this is actually rare, rare things we get to talk about tonight, so this should be actually a good discussion, but really critical to the type of work that we do. It is, again, not often that we ever get to do this, so...
No, and this is good, and we do have discussion items, but the majority of our work are quasi-judicial hearings.
Yeah. So just to confirm, did everyone receive in their packet a memo, a one-page memo from the staff regarding kind of the parameters of it? Okay, just for the public benefit, I'll go ahead and just throw it on the screen here again real quick, and have it but for reference. But effectively, we're asking the Planning Commission for early next year, of which this membership will continue on its membership through June 30th of next year. We're going to ask you all to consider map and text amendment proposals to establish a new zoning district for the city. We are expecting to propose what's going to be called an urban mixed-use, or an MU3 district to be established for the city-owned and Union-specific parcels. So at this point, I'm actually going to turn it over now to a PowerPoint, which will cover a lot of the topics. This is intended to be a discussion, and this is just, again, the first foray into this. We believe we'll have some more stuff written down as far as kind of a very initial draft of what the text in the code would look like, that would be in November, and a lot of that fill-in-the-blank stuff will come from the discussion tonight, we are hoping. So this is not your first whack at the pinata in a workshop setting, this is just the first foray into it tonight. So let's get going. And can you all see a full screen of the presentation, or are you getting kind of a partial screen?
Not a full screen here, we see the future...
We're seeing your notes page.
Okay, give me one moment to try to see if I can fix that, if not, I'll just convert this to PDF real quick, and that'll fix it. The joys of Zoom meetings. All right, take two, can you all see a relatively full screen of a PDF with the presentation now? Thank you, Shirley, see your head nodding vigorously. Okay, so just to clarify again, the potential location we're talking about, we're only talking about small areas, but a very critical area of the city, most of you know well, and again, for those of you who don't know, Troutdale as well, this is a good chunk of our urban renewal area. It is a property, or a group of properties, that is located north of our downtown, sandwiched in between Interstate 84th to the north, the Union Pacific Railroad line to the south, an active one, the Sandy River to the east, and the Columbia Gorge outlets to the west. When we say the urban renewal area, what's critical to know is that what you see there in yellow is not the only thing that's in our urban renewal area. The URA, as we call it for short, includes also the outlets, and it also includes a small city park on the other side of the tracks, Depot Park. This particular zoning district is being contemplated for the areas in yellow, and those are city-owned properties, of which there are four currently, and there's also a Union Pacific siding yard right along the rail, that the city does have an interest in ultimate acquisition, because it will ultimately help the potential for development possibility, and the potential to link downtown Troutdale with this site in one form or fashion. But this zoning district would not affect the zoning district of the outlets themselves, nor of Depot Park, those would be retaining their current zoning district. There's four main reasons why we're really considering a new zoning district for this site. The Town Center Committee has identified this area as an opportunity site, a major transformative opportunity site. It has some really unique characteristics and development potential that we believe that the existing zoning districts just don't meet. The concern for us is that if you try, and we'll cover this a little bit at length, if you try to change or finagle the existing zoning districts, you might cause actually more trouble than you're bargaining for, and you may have unintended consequences in other areas of the city by trying to potentially accommodate development. Establishing that new district will reduce, in our estimation, due diligence and entitlement time periods for any potential development that may be interested in going there. At the end of the day, development is always going to be a risk proposition, and if there are avenues that a seller, in this case, the City of Troutdale, or actually the Urban Renewal Agency of Troutdale, if there are things that the seller can do to minimize or ease the risk or concern for development to potentially be located in there, it might be in their interest to do it. And in this case, we have the ability to really reconsider a zoning district that may be more appropriate for the type and scale of development that's possible. It may lead to a quicker sale in the sale of the property, and in the development world, time equates to money. That is not, of course, the only reason why, and of course, we have reasons why we consider rezoning, but it is an important one to understand that's shaping why this is being contemplated, because the city does have invested interest in selling this property. There are some financial considerations that will happen if the city continues to lag or drag its feet in being able to relieve of the financial obligations to have this property. It eliminates some uncertainties regarding scale, dimensional standards, and land use allowances, resulting in less variance requests and a clearer understanding of what the developed objectives may be. In other words, we really have the ability with a new zoning district, it's clearly articulated. In other words, we really have the ability with a new zoning district to clearly articulate what the development expectation might be for this site. Here's just the map of our current zoning district. As you see, the area that we're contemplating is highlighted in that dashed yellow. Right now, the properties are two zoning districts. There are currently five properties on the site, four of which are city or urban renewal agency owned, one is the Union Pacific tract. And as you see, it is a mix right now, general commercial and mixed office housing. Here are some of the issues that we're seeing with the current zoning districts as it could apply potentially to redevelopment of this site. General commercial is really intended for intensive commercial uses. There's really no limitation to how big or how small you can go with it. But at the end of the day, if you consider other areas in the city where general commercial is, these are in largely more car-oriented areas such as frontage road or Stark Street, and those are perfectly fine designations for those corridors. It's probably not the spirit and intent of how the community is seeing the potential future development of this site. General commercial also restricts ground floor or standalone residential. What we're hearing from the development community and what we're seeing as far as trends and as far as demand is that residential is likely going to be a pretty heavy component of redevelopment in the, on this property. So while you can certainly have residential on second story or third story, maybe it's a mixed use building, you don't want to necessarily restrict yourself from not being able to allow for townhomes or for exclusive residential buildings themselves too, general commercial would not allow for that. It doesn't complement the urban form of downtown and the mix of uses that can coexist. Really, what we're hearing from the community is a desire to better match this type of development with the downtown setting. So we really need to think about design considerations or setback standards that are more appropriate to better lend itself with downtown. We're going to talk about height a lot tonight, there is a height restriction of 45 feet, and I'll, I'll touch back on that. There's also require a minimum street frontage of 50 feet, meaning smaller lots with mixed use uses are not possible. So take into account the average storefront along historic perimeter or highway in our downtown. Those storefronts are as small as 20 feet wide in some cases, sometimes they're double, but a general commercial zoning district required, requires 50 feet. So if you're thinking, or a developer is thinking about maybe further partitioning and creating a small little storefront strip, that wouldn't be possible with general commercial. One sec, my view here is blocking my last point there. And then requiring setbacks that do not match the character of downtown, again, that talks about trying to blend again the idea of continuing a town center feel and a town center approach to this area. You also saw that we have mixed office or housing, mixed office slash housing as another zoning district on this site. There are really two critical areas where we see deficiencies there for future development potential. Again, a height restriction, which really for mixed use buildings, 35 feet really does not pencil out. Building footprints are also limited to 20,000 square feet. That can also, in some cases, restrict the type or caliber of development that you may believe you want to see in that location. So you may not want to set that type of a hard cap on building size in that location. But you may also want to set a cap for a building to go, you know, stay under a certain square footage too. So without really fundamentally changing the core dynamics of these zoning districts, you really need to contemplate a new zoning district. Because if you, if you try to mix with these or meddle with these and try to make it work for this particular site, you may be causing situations for other property zones the same way in other parts of the city where you may get something that you're not anticipating. You really, if, if these zoning districts work in the other parts of the city, leave them be, is basically what we're saying. Let's focus on this site and let's focus on delivering a zoning district that can work for this site. Are there any questions before I kind of pivot to some suggestions for how we can maybe move this forward? And I'll stop sharing so we can see the whole screen.
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
The outlet mall, why isn't it included? Would it be beneficial if you, if you included the outlet mall?
It could, we just haven't approached them yet about this idea. If they were interested in it, yeah, we could include them. A lot of times, though, that just requires some of this conversation about it, but I don't think we would be opposed to considering it. There might be some things, though, if you're contemplating a higher height standard, the way the outlet mall is positioned, if you're going to increase height standards, that has much more of a visual impact than if you do just on the city-owned property behind the outlet mall, so that would be a consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I have a quick question, we're talking about an urban mixed use, but it's, is, would we ever consider mixed use in other locations outside of urban?
Yes, yes, and I think that speaks to maybe on, on that memo that you have, kind of the bottom two points is, you kind of already have mixed use in, in Troutdale, it's just not really called that. You have central business district, which is effectively a mixed use, though primarily a commercial district, but that could be considered a MU1 or mixed use one district, where you have a really hard cap on, on size of building and design standard and height. And that's perfectly fine, nobody, I don't think anybody would be thinking that you should change that. That really contributes to the small-town ambiance that you have. But that's kind of already a mixed use district, and really the MOH district is kind of one-two, because it does allow for that commercial component, and that could be considered a MU2, a mixed use two. And that's also why we're arriving at MU3 for the potential numbering for this one. So this, this mixed use is talking about having a more dense or more intensive development pattern, but doing it in an area where it makes sense, where it wouldn't make sense anywhere else in the community.
Okay, thank you.
And if the word urban throws people off, we can think of another word too, it doesn't, doesn't have to be called urban.
I don't know that the word urban is necessary.
All right, let me go back to the shared screen real quick and we'll pivot to the next slide here. So we have a couple of suggestions for how you might want to lay this out. There is going to be a typical style to how any zoning district gets laid out in the code. So you have basically an intent section, which you'll be spending next month really going through and, and wordsmithing quite a bit. You have then a permitted use section, a conditional use section, dimensional standards, and then you have special, special considerations or special standards for the zoning district. That is kind of a copy paste structure that has been used throughout each chapter or each section in that, in the zoning district chapter. So understand what you're seeing here on the screen, it wouldn't necessarily depart, but there are a few things that might, you may want to pay attention to as we start crafting this zoning district. Permitted and conditional uses, you may want to further divide that as far as what you think would be good as a standalone situation, meaning a standalone building or a co-located or shared building situation. The case in point, let's talk about, for instance, a medical or professional office. In some, some people may think, you know what, if we could get a big commercial office building, maybe with a medical feature, a standalone building, that's fine. Other people may say, well, okay, yeah, it could be good, but I'm not really comfortable with it. I would much rather prefer if it was co-located, say, on the ground floor of a mixed use building. It might be appropriate for you all to consider what you, not, not just which land use is appropriate from a permitted or conditional use, but how that land use is actually positioned on the site. Another classic example is, okay, a standalone restaurant or a standalone grocery store, is that a potential thing that you are comfortable with being standalone? Or would you rather, from an architectural point of view, do you want to have it be co-located? It's not anything we've ever tried before. The risk, of course, you run is you maybe try to dictate to the market what you should or should not be doing, and whether or not that's appropriate or not. It is a method that you could consider, but it's also a way that you can assure that you get certain types of development that you feel more strongly could be standalone or should be, should be blended together. So that is one concept to discuss that I think we would like to hear from you all tonight about. Let me finish through this page and then I'd like to get your feedback on that. Second is to require ground floor commercial design standards and ground floor residential design standards. This is something that, given that this is truly for this particular site, a generational chance to really leave a good impression, you may want to consider those types of standards. You already demand that of your central business district zoning district, and you also demand it to an extent of your town center area by and large. So this is not some radical concept. You have created standards for your CBD, consider them for your town center, or for your, for this site. The Town Center Committee has suggested you might need to. Particularly if you want to preserve a good linkage or a natural extension of, of the downtown into this, this site. You may want to have that in place. You may also want to consider, consider a menu of options for meeting site design standards that you can use a point system. So it basically allows you to pick from a cafeteria of design considerations where it gets you to a sufficient number. These options for site design and for building, these are suggestions that were made in part through the Main Streets and Halsey planning effort. And it's a way, rather than trying to prescribe specific architectural standards to a developer, it provides the developer a lot, a little bit more latitude as far as how they can achieve a quality design. You know, for instance, you, you may require residential, you know, you have to have dormers, or you have to have, you know, here's a list of 20 things that you should have, pick 10 of them. And that why you're, you're not trying to necessarily commit anybody to a very particular architectural standard or have a mishmash of architectural styles in order just to satisfy the code. So it's a suggestion on how you can achieve still good design, but not really restrict yourself or, or seem like you're penalizing a developer from, from only in one way. With that, I will entertain any questions on these particular general ideas, whether you like it or you don't, or anything, and we'll just say anything non-height related and non-use related, because we're going to talk about height and use here momentarily.
Okay, questions for staff?
This point system that you're talking about, has that been used in other cities and how successful is it or is it not?
It is used in other cities, and actually, I think we find, or studies are suggesting that it's probably a preferred method to do it, because architectural standards can change over time, or architectural preferences do. It, it also then reduces the concern from the community that staff, for instance, is just going to look at it and just approve it. There has to be some design expectation that comes in without maybe having a design review committee being affixed to it. Because design review committees also have a tendency to get caught up in the details. So this is maybe a healthy balance, and we, we feel like it can work pretty well.
It actually does work. Pretty well. Other questions for staff? As far as dictating where something's going to go, I think that's really a tough place for us to be. Typically, you know, you're just excited to get somebody to go in. And I think when, when we're saying, okay, that this store has to go here, maybe that doesn't fit in with the overall scheme of the development. Or maybe the footage of the store doesn't match up to the site. I think that's really hard to nail something down to that degree.
It, yo, there's definitely some pitfalls associated with it, but let me offer just the counterpoints for the sake of debate. You have mixed use zoning districts out there that say, we allow residential uses or commercial uses. And let's say we allow grocery stores, for instance. And let's say Troutdale's fortunate enough, we've been trying for 20 years, bless our hearts, to land a grocery store in this general vicinity. If the grocery store comes in and says, okay, we need 60,000 square foot building, or an 80,000 square foot building and three acres of parking and truck movements, is that something that you want down there? If the use is permitted, they have every right to do it there. Is that the highest and best use of the property? And is that the expectation that the community has for the 16 or so acres that are affected by this zone change? Or is the preference that, yes, we like grocery stores, but we want to see it either co-located or something else? Again, here's where this values proposition comes in. You know, you maybe, maybe you're just want a conditional use it, but then at the same rate, that introduces an element of concern from a developer, like, well, there's no guarantee. I can't really go out to market and say, yeah, I can make your, your development pencil here. So it's a tricky balance, and you're not going to solve it tonight, but understand there's no right answer. It's really comes down to community value, and that's what you folks are charged with in drafting this.
Right, I'm just saying, I think it's really tough when you say, okay, you got this much for this, this half to go here.
Right.
I think it puts them in a tough spot. If you give somebody for the 60,000 square foot store in there, I need my half.
I, I'm just using that as a potential example, but at one point, some of you who've been in Troutdale longer, you know that there was a 1.2 hundred thousand square foot commercial facility being, or a commercial store being proposed at that site.
That's true.
So if you allow for general merchandise, and that use comes in, or that use comes back, not saying that it will, economically speaking, for a while, it probably won't, but you may open yourself up to that risk if you list it just as a permitted use. So if you're going to do that, you may, or if you're, you're concerned about that, then you need to have some parameters to, to make it work. Because really, again, by, by putting it as a permitted use, you are basically saying, yep, we're okay with that. You still have to go through staff review, but generally, we're comfortable with that.
Well, it's a permitted use, but I, I think if we start nailing down site locations, which is what we were talking about earlier, I think that's hard.
It is hard, yep.
And I guess I'd say, you know, if you're going to invest $200 million, you might have something that you want some control over.
Okay.
Just a thought. What do you guys think?
Mr. Chair, if I may, just a brief comment here. And prefacing that, you know, while recognizing that this is just in emphasis, this is just the beginning of the conversation with, with loose parameters. Overall, obviously, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of a general, in general, of, of, of a, the elimination of, of a zoning strictly based on segregation of users. So having a mixed use, I, I think is a, is a great step in the right direction. This is obviously indeed, as you've said, and the staff has said, this is a complex proposition. But I, I think that if we go that far, and I think is there, this a step in the right direction, then we have to be a little more constructive in the way we proceed. I, I will see this as an opportunity, and I know I'm going to say something that in my, in some respect, not completely, but in some respect, take a tangent from what you had just stated. I would like then an analysis, a full analysis, like we do in district plan at college level for college campus. And you look at Sasaki, Michael Dennis, the most outstanding example. I worked with them on the, on the Ohio State University campus master plan in 1996, and really is a full, actually is a full build-out, and it uses also a level of local government. A full build-out, because it's done, a full build-out of, of, of building, 100% build-out. They use also as a base for a traffic study to see what kind of improvement. And so if we go that far, if we decide that we are going to create, we have, we have a vision for something that has to happen in the future. If we try to create a larger possible opportunity by also changing the quality of the urban fabric, by going to a standard nine to five, which is generated by segregation of users, to a public space, to a, to an urban space, but stretch of the life to around 2022, so introduce also level of security and safety and all these things. Then I think a graphic analysis, a, a, a representation that, that shows void and fool in the building location exactly. We would like to see, because I think nobody better than the staff and some of us are comfortable, are familiar with, with, with the image you want to have, with the language of the code, and how to push. with the language of the code, and how to push the envelope. This doesn't mean they're going to be inflexible and intransigent, but then we have a specific view about where things should go, and also what kind of density. I think an analysis of the FARs would be relevant, extremely relevant, because we know by studies that were done in the past 40 years, that when we start to go below a specific threshold of FAR floor ratio, then you're doomed to in success. And this does not just apply to the malls or the models of the 60s, where a point 25 with a building of 20,000 square feet or, even 20,000 square feet with, with 24 acres in, in, in parking was eventually catastrophic situation. This also happened to downtown urban fabrics. So it, I, I would like to see eventually, even as an exercise, where we introduce also after the expert have been there to have a conversation with the community, because I think is relevant, that if we address this for the community, there should be input from a cultural standpoint, from a social standpoint about, and also to understand a little bit better what the community wants. But I would like then to see a full study, like we do for the campus district, for university that I have, a population of 60,000, and divide entire campus and district, and it's done also by larger city, the population and, and area.
Okay. Anyone else?
I guess I would just say, if we're going to go to that level, we need to educate people on what type of critical mass is needed, you know, what type of infrastructure is needed so that this can actually work.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's.
I know God had a store here once.
I'm familiar with that guy, yeah. So no, one thing, again, and, and this will come up also with height conversations, some of these concepts are new. They're not necessarily new to the planning world, not even new to the metro region, but they are new for Troutdale, and it is going to require you all to become acquainted with these concepts, and to be either, well, to at least be educated. Whether you're comfortable with it or not, that ultimately is when the rubber hits the road, and you make your, your decision. But it, you know, one of the things that we are doing to kind of what Mr. Mamonie was kind of alluding to, the city is actually studying right now and testing out concepts for developability, for what the carrying capacity is for the property, for considering what the market will bear as far as what types of uses, or how many residential units, or what amount of square footage for a commercial. That type of work is already being done and being contemplated. It's not been completed yet, but it is running parallel potentially to this effort. So that is going to help infer a little bit of what those land use considerations are. And we wouldn't be coming to you with this land use application once formalized until we have that study in hand to really know what is possible and not just pie in the sky.
Yeah.
Because everything, and for those of you who've been in Troutdale longer, you have seen dozens of pretty pictures for that site. Some of it was absolutely unrealistic and just looked cool, but it was unrealistic. So this is what we're trying to do a little bit differently. We're trying to get the market reality, utility reality tied with it.
And I guess I would say, right now, it's like, we don't even know what the market reality is.
Not yet, but we do know what, we do, we do have a general direction from the town center committee at least, that has been tacitly endorsed by the city council, at least in its current form, not after July, January 1. But we do have a general list of expectation for what's desired down there.
Oh, I, I don't disagree with that.
Yeah. Were there any other questions on this slide, or?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Ready to move on? Okay.
All right, let's, let's touch the third rail, and let's talk about heights. I'm going to go through several slides here, but right off the gate, you should know the, the request for this particular zoning district, and I stress this one only, no other zoning district, no established zoning district, nothing that would be in downtown Troutdale or along these streets. There is a proposal for a 65-foot height standard. Given the nature of buildings that usually accomplish this height, there's usually desire for some flexibility to allow for either architectural flourishes, or elevator shafts, or even rooftop terraces, or, or, or penthouse type situations. And some cities approach this by allowing for an additional 10, in some cases 20, and this proposal may be 10 feet to go higher. The catch would be is that no more than 40% of that building can eclipse that 65-foot high standard. So effectively, it is 65 feet, but you won't, you could allow for a slightly taller building. In this situation too, in order to kind of keep this more human scale, what you could consider is at a 35-foot mark, so basically anything above three stories, you could introduce one of two things, or both. You could introduce then a required setback off a property line, or you could require the building itself to step back. So when it's viewed from the street level, particularly from the sidewalk level, if you're adjacent to it, you still optically only see effectively a three-story facade, because the rest of the building is stepped back, so you do not see the full impact, at least from the street eye level, right in front of the building. This is a huge departure from what Troutdale currently has. It's completely acknowledged, and I'm not going to sugarcoat it, it is a departure. But I'm going to show you a few slides to suggest why it might be in your interest to do that. And as I show you these slides, keep in mind a few other things that are in the background that this group is really well acquainted with. You have a housing need. You have a housing need especially for higher-end housing. You have a downtown where there's going to be significant retail turnover that has already occurred and will continue to occur. While downtown has definitely latched on to a tourism perspective, and there are definitely some local, locally oriented shops, one thing we have continued to hear from the town center surveys, from citizens, we want more downtown, we want more dining, we want more services, we want, want more shopping, more options. When retailers and stores and commercial opportunities look for these opportunities, the immediate adjacency of the number of people living near that, effectively your market capture area is going to be critical. And one thing that this town center, out of all the other town centers in this region has going against it, we do not have as critical a mass of people. We do not have the same population in the immediate area to truly support or expand the downtown business base. Doing a larger or more dense residential component in this particular area might be your solution in how to do it, and it also might minimize the actual impact of increased residential density in areas you do not want to see that, where you want to maintain that small town feel. So let me show you a few slides here, and then you can rip my head off if you want to. So this is a view that we showed with the town center committee right here. This is, imagine a cross-section, and I'm sorry that line didn't show well, but if you see where my cursor is, this is basically the terrain. If you're looking at, along the railroad, let's say you're on the, the bridge on 257th, looking east toward the bluff. Historic Columbia River Highway is here. Here is basically a side profile of downtown buildings here. They are 35 feet height, that would be the maximum height that they can be. And in this case, from the street level here, the, the building is at 25 feet. Notice also just the general elevation, this is elevation above sea level. The site that we're talking about rezoning is actually at about 30 feet above sea level. Historic Columbia River Highway is actually at about 70 to 75 feet above sea level. So you already have a tremendous height differentiation between what's in downtown and what's potentially developable on that site. To throw in the water tower, which is still on the site, this is a side profile of the water tower. So the water tower is about this height, it's not the actual location of it. But if you look at the water tower's rungs, those horizontal rungs, that first rung is about 35 feet. That second rung is at about 70 to 75 feet. So that gives you an impression of what a 30-foot, 35-foot tall building would do, as well as what a 75-foot tall building would do. The total tower height, by the way, is 130 feet, so we're not, we're not suggesting you build that high. But it, just keep that water tower in the back of your mind as you look at what development possibility would be. On the right there, what we are trying to avoid, the situation we don't want, and we heard very loud and clear, is we don't want to have that type of heights in downtown. And we agree, it completely and fundamentally changes the look and feel of downtown Troutdale. That is what you want to avoid. So how do you accomplish that additional residential density in this location? You build it close by, but you build it out of sight, and you build it out of mind.
Underground.
Underground, yeah, you can do that, but that's a little cost prohibitive. But taking case, now our worst-case scenario, 75-foot tall, partially 75-foot tall building, if you build it at this general terrain level, you are not really disrupting the visual plane that you see from afar. In other words, if you're on that bridge and you see it, it doesn't really jut above and beyond what's already built at the built environment at, at a, at a distance. You keep a similar vision plane, and you don't really interrupt any sort of vista that you have looking east toward the bluff or even into the gorge. The shadow impacts, because this property is located to the north of downtown, the shadow impacts affect only that property. They do not lord over or shade over downtown like a, like 70-foot tall building would in downtown. So you minimize the shadow effect. That's important, because shadow, or sunlight, or the lack of, really affects somebody's psychological disposition as far as how long and how they use your downtown. You're using your terrain to your advantage here. And a person that's on the street in downtown, if they're on the south side of the street, so the side where, where the Discovery Block is and where the Vision Clinic is, you're not going to see a 75-foot tall building when you look against the storefronts looking north, you're not going to see it. And even if it was a shorter building in downtown, if it was just a one-story building, you're not going to see that building against the building studs, it's not going to look over it. What you're doing here, if you allow for a taller building in this area, you can maintain the small-town feel that you like in downtown, but you can get the residential density you need nearby, the residential in particular, even though this could be a mixed-use situation. You have then the ability to also bridge over the railroad tracks at a level, and you can connect the development potentially right in. I mean, that is going to be a much different conversation, that's truly a development conversation, not a, not a code conversation, but this is an example of how you use the terrain to your advantage, you can introduce higher density, and you not mess up downtown. Here are a couple of visual examples. So this is an example looking east from basically under the arch, and we put a speculative 75-foot tall building in the area. This is a Google Earth image, so it's kind of a rough approximation, but you can see the water tower where that height is, you can see that there is some existing vegetation on the parking lot side, and really, any sort of building there does not even eclipse the vegetation in that point. This is from above what used to be the gravel lot, now the new parking lot on Second Street, looking kind of northeast. You can see the water tower over there, if you pay attention to the shade with the roofline there. If you have that, there is an impact, but again, you're also at a higher altitude on Second Street. That just provides an example of what that could, could be. You'll notice even the Discovery Block roofline is taller than what any impact would be on that site if you were at maximal height build out. With that, I would ask if there are any questions on height.
Commissioner Glenn?
So I understand the importance of seeing how it looks from downtown Troutdale, but how about how it looks from where most of the traffic is, which is on 257th to the west of the Outlook Mall? How high is the Outlook Mall, and how big is that going to look behind it? Is, what's the terrain look like?
It's, the Outlook Mall terrain is flat. I don't have one that is, I'm, I'm trying to see if I have another image here where you can see it. I pulled these images from a slideshow we gave for the town center committee. Let me screenshot here in just a minute. This is from, the closest I can get for you, Commissioner Glenn, let me pull this one up here. This is from 257th, but this is admittedly from a, not, not a street level. And I can, what I can do for you, or for, for the commission, we can kind of replicate this and show it to you in a subsequent email, in case you want to ponder it. But this is 257th, kind of on that bridge, current view. Again, this is a Google Earth view right now, so I apologize for the granular nature of it. But this speaks to the similar plane dynamics. So this, this is basically the current situation, and if you were to introduce a development, again, that, that building there right here would be at a 75-foot level here. If you kind of draw a figurative line, you can see that similar plane. We can, again, try to get it more specific, and we can try to get it to the entrance of the outlets to show you what that, that could look like. And what I would stress here is, we're just showing a hypothetical. This is not necessarily what's being planned or anything like that, because we don't even have any formal solicitation for any development at this point. I think we're just showing what a potential building would do for visual purpose or visual effect.
But let's be clear, building height is going to be a lightning rod. The town center committee worked for three years, this was by far the most divided, contested thing of any part of their work.
Well, it, it's a tough issue, because what we hear from the development community, and you shouldn't always treat it as gospel, but what you hear from the development community is for, for a true mixed-use situation to work, where you're imagining a typical ground-floor retail, maybe above-ground residential. In the past, maybe you would consider office, but that's increasingly unlikely in the, in the COVID and post-COVID world. You need four stories at least, because that is really required for the return on investment, you need to have at least four stories, which is at least 45 feet. The consideration and the concern we would have in this particular site is that this site is going to take a lot of infrastructure. That infrastructure is not necessarily born on the city to prepare. We don't have, quite frankly, the money just to pave all sorts of new roads. So it's really then the development community's expectation that they're, they're going to create that infrastructure, build it, and either deed it or, you know, keep some of it for themselves. So if they're going to be bringing those costs to the market, then they have to have that return on investment somewhere made up. And that is why you might see a need for a higher height allowance, really for, to make development pencil and to make it work. Again, we go back to the values proposition for the community. You know, if the community really has a hard time with that, that's fine, that's understandable. If the community wants to maintain a lower height threshold, that is perfectly defensible. But understand, you might restrict the type of development that the community has told us that they want, or the types of amenities that the community say they want, you might not be able to achieve it. So this is just the hard proposition that we're trying to marry here, and you guys have a pivotal role in figuring that out.
Why was 40% the number picked for up to 75 feet? Why not do something where it's a conditional use of up to 75%, and that would give us more encouragement for high-end county housing?
So would that mean a conditional use for anything above a certain?
I mean, I'd be willing to give it 100% above 65 as a conditional use, as long as they're looking at that as, you know, the, the high-end kinds of things.
Right.
Because that's what we want.
40%, I think what we, we got that number was looking at a couple of typical hotel prototypes in particular, because a hotel use right now has kind of come near the top as far as, when we've talked with the development community about what interests them about that site, or what they would do, a hotel was more or less a unanimous thought, not for the entirety of the site, but as a potential use there. And when you look at some hotel prototypes, at least of the mid, mid-range to higher-end type hotel, three-star or up, many of them have a architectural thing where, okay, your top floor is there, but then they have 10 feet of decorative roof lines or elements, or elevator shafts, or rooftop unit, air conditioning units, so they need that additional 10 feet. So if they're able to do a six-story hotel as opposed to a five-story one, that 65, 75 thing could be a big deal for them. And that could, could capture within that 40% of the roofline, similar to an idea of like a upstairs penthouse, in a, in a nice condominium building. Or a rooftop deck for a restaurant or a lounge. That was just a, a number that we saw repeated through other codes, and that was one we are proposing.
A, a restaurant would be amazing there, but again, you know, a conditionally A restaurant would be amazing there, but again, you know, a conditional use gives us a little bit of encouragement.
Yeah, yeah, that's completely fair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Chris, just a question for you, just to clarify a little bit, assuming that I understood exactly what you said. You were talking about what you were showing, the development, the potential development at seventy-five feet, that there is, for lack of better English, a city lack of infrastructure, that the developer would then have to somewhat supply, and that might potentially affect the development. But if I understood correctly also, you were talking about that this area is in the urban renewal district. So is it correct? Am I correct?
Yeah, it is an urban renewal area. That's right.
So if it is in the urban renewal district, the greatest advantage about being an urban renewal, URA, is that you use tax income and financing, use it tough as a mechanism, which means you bond for improvement, and then you repay the bond through the marginal increment in property taxes assessed when you assess the value of time zero before the improvement. So I don't see, and I might be disingenuous at this point, but I don't see that as an issue. And while I know that obviously we have to be very careful and tactful when we deal with developer, I think on the other end that when we create the right urban fabric, when we are attentive about what we're doing, that the development, if it's going to come, is going to come. And so I don't, I would prefer, and I have to be very cautious with my language, not to be totally dependent upon what developers say, because we know exactly what kind of bell the development, the development communities is going to ring. And so they're going to, they're going to obviously be, you know, subservient, and I would like to be careful about that. There's a bunch of thoughts, obviously. The other question that I wanted to ask for you, you were showing the street section of downtown, and you were showing the two buildings on the south side and the north side, and both of them looks like thirty-five feet, but the one on the north side was sunken. So what is the height, actual, in actual floors of the downtown right now? In actual story?
Let me pull it up. Yeah, let me pull it up here real quick. So with thirty-five feet, so that was based, the way we measure it, thirty-five feet is the height maximum for a building in the central business district for downtown. It's based on the prevailing grade. So the building there on the left that you see, it actually takes its grade and its measurement and that height allowance from the bottom story for where that rear parking is, that runs between those buildings and the railroad track. It doesn't take it actually from that side. So that's why you see that discrepancy.
Okay, so the height of the building on downtown by the side of the tree on the north side is only two-story then?
Effectively, yeah. In one or two cases, could you maybe get a three-story, but it's effectively limited to two.
And while the one on the, on the, on the south side by the heart, as I said, is thirty-five feet, but that means thirty-five feet implicitly mean three-story or is still two-stories?
Well, it depends on the architectural vernacular. Like, for instance, the, you saw, the other slide also showed the roofline of, I think I can pull it up here real quick. It showed the roofline of the newly created Discovery Block right there. That's a large gabled roof. That's a thirty-five-foot-tall building, but it's only a two-story building. But if they would have flat-roofed it, they probably could have gotten three stories out of it.
And so, thank you very much, by the way. I appreciate the clarification, because, and again, I know we are in infancy, but a couple of statements, because these were questions, but so I, I think that we, these are an opportunity, for my sense, is that we should also consider raise the height of the building downtown, at least three-story high, whatever, whatever the number might be, if it is forty feet, if it's forty-five feet, but three-story high, because again, the model does no work if you go two-story or one-story high. Again, you don't create a mixed-use fabric, you create, you don't stretch the social life, the public life from nine to five to twenty, twenty-two hours. And so you're really, the model does not survive. The second one, and again, we're still in such an infancy, but I'm a little bit skeptical about making an analysis of future development solely based on the topography of the land. I mean, you need a completely different perspective, really need a master plan on, as I said before, on void and full of building, on location, on masses. Even as Commissioner Glenn suggested, the view, what is very important, the view from downtown, but also the view from the opposite side, what does this, you know, what does this tower suddenly look like? And I had nothing wrong, nothing against a seventy-five-feet-story building, because, you know, the height changes also as you approach a different location, and as you have this transit area between railroad and then you move upward toward the rest of the city, change. But again, I'm skeptical about analysis just based on numbers, based on topography. I would like to see really modeling and, or full and void from different, for different angle, for different view to see how it affects the view. But again, I know we are at the beginning.
No, the parallel effort I was telling you about, there is going to be some modeling that shows it, and I'm sure that can be certainly entered as evidence one way or the other when we do get to the land use application, or maybe ideally beforehand. But you make a good point. I mean, I think we brought it up because right now, the only thing we have to work with on that property that has any sort of scale is in fact the water tower. And it just so happens, the water tower happens to have very convenient crossbeams where we can show where those heights are. So it's one of those things, if you're able to go out on-site, which by the way, you are, there's now a temporary disc golf course on the site, you can walk there and walk comfortably, you are allowed to be on the site, you can get at least a perception of potentially what, you know, the height restriction is or what it could be, but it's not perfect, because optical illusions do exist in the real world. You can, you can, I mean, it's the classic case of the Disneyland castle, where it looks like it's three hundred feet tall when it's only like seventy feet tall. Like, there are ways developers, architects do that. So it's not, I appreciate your comment, it's not the only way that we measure what is appropriate or not.
Thank you.
The only comment I would throw back is, also, for downtown, we have thirty-five-foot height limit presently, which allows three stories. Okay, anyone else have any comments?
I have a comment on the height. I don't have a problem with height per se, but one thing I was thinking is that all the development going into Gresham on Civic Drive, right next to the MAX station, and you go five or six stories in Troutdale, you don't have a MAX station, you're not going to get a MAX spur into the URA. So I'm really concerned about, you know, that, that level of urban density, population density, and providing parking essentially.
It's a fair point.
Yeah. And hence the push for the parking structure.
Right.
That's a very good point. It'll, it'll be interesting to see how the developments come in.
Yeah. One thing I should have said at the top, the acreage on this property, what we're talking about rezoning is about twenty-two acres, of which about sixteen to seventeen of those acres will actually be developable. Four of those acres along the river will be effectively park, will be the riverfront park and the trail. So, I mean, sixteen acres, that, you know, a typical downtown city block, so you imagine Buxton, Historic Highway Second, and Dora, that's one acre. So you're basically creating a space that is double the size of your, double or triple in some, how you measure it, the size of your existing downtown that you're contemplating for scale.
And I guess the only other thing I would say is back on the, you know, dictating the site. I'm not saying do it, I'm not saying don't do it, I'm just saying it's really tough, because like, if you look at our business, we're going to spend twenty million putting in a grocery store. And if somebody says, you're going on this corner, not this corner, doesn't happen. That's kind of the reality of it. And then you've got restaurants and other businesses, some will go in-line, some will be standalone, and that's the only model they go with. And so we can dictate some of those things, but you also don't know what you're going to get. Because if you look at places today, how many strip malls where you see a church or a gymnasium or something in there? That wasn't Plan A, or Plan B, or Plan C. That's the reality with the market.
Got you. But that cuts both ways, too, because the market twenty or thirty years ago might have said, a grocery store works here fine. And then markets change, or a new store gets built on a twenty-year cycle, and then you're left with real estate that really is unbecoming. So the question you have also to ask is, what is your, never mind the use legacy, what's your building and structural, what's your urban fabric? What is the legacy of what ultimately gets built?
Right.
You know, so, again, this is a generational, quite frankly, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to get it right. There's no pressure, but this site demands that you all get it right as a community. You can't screw it up. I mean, there's too much money that has been spent and too good of a site with all the optics and with all the potential to really make a difference in this community, you have to get it right. And we staff don't claim to know the answer, we can only give you guys some thoughts to chew on. Ultimately, it is the value proposition in this community, you're manifesting that through code, the Town Center Committee manifests that through its desires and recommendations, and ultimately, it's the electeds who have to make the decision on who their dance partner will be to develop it. But you better damn well articulate what you want for this site, and you guys have to approach it from that really tough perspective, and that's through code. We're here to help, but we're not here to tell you, you need to do it one way or the other. We're here to help, but we will have some uncomfortable conversations at times. We're prepared for it. But you guys have always been good about navigating those difficult conversations in a very civil discourse, so I applaud you, and I suspect we won't have any, even if we agree to disagree, we're still going to continue to work for the benefit of the community.
We've done that before.
You have, you have. But understand, you know, if you hear staff being passionate about one thing, it's not because we're trying to tell you, you need to do this, we really need you to think it, think it through, because we may hear things, or we may have learned things, a thing or two along our way, that we feel like you need to know. And again, if it's not in the interest of this community, that's okay, too. So we might be a little bit more forthright than we usually are in helping you navigate this.
And I'm certainly not saying we just kowtow to the developer.
No.
I'm not saying that at all, but I do think the more restrictions we put on it, the less opportunity we're going to have.
You strike that balance.
Is this not part of, is there other property, this dog leg?
Yeah, so the dog leg, which you're referring to, I think Herr Stappensen is pointing to the map, that is the Union Pacific Siding Property, that actually stretches almost all the way to 257th.
And that's a separate lot?
It is a separate lot owned by them.
Okay.
Yeah. UP has expressed an interest in selling it to the city, but it would need a comparable lot nearby, of which there are a couple of candidates. So it's not, it's not out of reality, even for a railroad, which is notoriously difficult to work with. They have been flexible in accommodating that thought.
Who would want them to do the cleanup?
Yes, yeah.
Chris, if I may, one question again, because I, you know, I'm the last arrival on the committee, and I've always discovered something new during this meeting, probably should be aware, for this kind of project, have we, as the city already introduced, or already completed, or is think about it, an outreach program to, you know, Discovery Troutdale is a quite diverse city, with population, cultural heritage. So as the city already done an outreach program to learn about the different cultural heritage, wishes, desires, needs, while addressing this urban fabric, I mean, we're building an urban fabric, we're making a vision, like you say, generational, for different generations, and we have a diverse community. Have we, you know, somebody made a statement, we're going to teach something, which is absolutely true, but I think is a two-way street. We're going to be learning something, we need to learn something, because this is not done in a vacuum for the nine of us, it's done for a population which is much larger than we are. And so because we are different, diverse population with different cultural heritage, the simple question was, have we done something to assess what are these wishes, the desire, these needs? Also, the look, I mean, we're talking about a square or a plaza, call it whatever you want, we have a Latino population, they view the public space in a different way that, you know, people do. And so I think every ingredient is going to be relevant to what we do. Have we done something like that yet or not yet?
Yeah.
Have we talked to the community at all?
So to answer your question, there's been some, there probably could be more. I would say that the Town Center planning effort did a pretty decent job as far as getting feedback and solicitation, not just from the common people who, you know, attend night meetings, but we, there was online surveys, and there was a range of ages on that. So that's one element of it. The park element of it has, actually, right now, as a matter of fact, there's another meeting with the Parks Advisory Committee to further discuss public outreach on the design of the park and the trail, which is really a big sell for, for the, it's a big win for the community, and it's a big selling point as far as development solicitation, that they have an opportunity to develop not just a long waterfront, but a public waterfront.
Of course, there's less guessing. So in simple words, have we done something like that, not as comprehensive as you would like to see it? Do you anticipate even more?
Well, I mean, certainly from a, from a, from a getting this land use approval, there would have to be more through the public hearing. I would imagine it's going to be in the city, and I, this would be speaking for the city as the Urban Renewal Agency, it's going to be in their best interest as they begin really solicitation, that they hear one more time from the community to see what the desires are. One of the things we're intending to do, we haven't put it out there yet, is there'll be a little sign out on the site where people are actually, you know, playing disc golf right now, an opportu, where the property is open for the public. And the sign might just say, what do you want to see here on this site? What do you think this is going to happen? You know, what does this site look twenty years from now?
Nuclear power.
So, I mean, you can have a multitude of outreach efforts. I mean, the, to think, though, that the only outreach is just show up at an open house at seven o'clock on a Wednesday night, that's just not outreach anymore. You can't do that in the code.
I agree, and in fact, I didn't mean that. And in fact, actually, I also think of it as something that you say, and I know, again, we've got to be careful, because we are, like you say, we're all passionate, we say things in the moment. No, I did not mean that, that we had to tell.
No, I wasn't thinking you were, yeah. I wasn't thinking you were. What I'm saying is just that there's going to have to be a more disciplined and wide-ranging way of outreach beyond what we typically as planners do.
Thank you. But also, as a clarification, just to be clear, because I know I say something, I may have some type, even if I say in the wrong way, get lost in translation, or people have their own images. I did not mean when I say we had to have a roadmap, we had to have a clear build-out, that we had to tell, in this corner, in this lot, we want this specific building, decided this density and, no, no. I'm saying we have to have the flavor of the entire downtown. What is the image? What is the vision of future development? How do we see people walking around? And then, once we have, even, even we've created some sort of a masses, a monolithic block, then the developer can come and say, you know, we would like, for example, to be in this specific corner, if I say, no, I prefer to be a little bit moved around on the side, on the east, on the north, but at least we know there is some sort of a mass there, because if we leave it carte blanche, then it's going to be completely different. At least because we know what the flavor is given by the community, by the expert, given what the density is supposed to be to be successful, then we can give some direction. I did not mean, and I'm a bit categorical about it, we should tell, in this corner, only a grocery store, twenty thousand square feet or nothing. I don't think we can afford that.
I have seen that be done, okay?
And thank you for indulging me.
It's like a blank slate. The study that I was referring to, the parallel effort, they are developing concepts, not just numbers and on a spreadsheet, they are actually laying out on the map some concepts for building configuration, street layout, parking, all that stuff would be kind of contemplated. And it's by no means binding, but it certainly can help steer what the community expectation is, that manifests with what you're doing here with code.
Thank you.
But this is a huge help to a developer.
Yeah.
Really is.
Yeah.
Okay, so you want to go over challenges, or you think you got it?
The last one I wanted to touch on, and I don't think it's, well, it might be spirited, but I did want to touch also on just general uses, as far as if there were any burning passions for uses that, by uses, land uses, types of business or how you treat the property, how the Planning Commission feels about certain things. I take it that the Planning Commission probably would not want to see marijuana dispensaries or facilities on the site. That's just a hunch. So. So really, what we're trying to.
Aluminum smelter?
What's that?
Aluminum smelter?
Nor aluminum smelters, nor sauerkraut processors. There's going to be certain uses, I think, that we know would not be desired in that location. But I think it does worth having at least, so we don't go totally blind, or we don't give you something a month from now where you're like, "What on earth is this?" Are there other uses out there that you would have a concern about on this site? Or that you think should be conditional for sure? So case in point, standard run-of-the-mill rate, commercial retail is probably not going to be that controversial. What about a restaurant with a drive-through facility, for instance? What about, what about a, you know, a, a large commercial store? Do you cap it at a certain square footage? You know, things like that. I think if we had some idea on what maybe some of your interests or bias might be, that we can at least throw it on paper, and then we can have that continued discussion in November on that.
Let me ask this. Are you looking for most of this controlling it through the land use process or through the deed process?
This would be through, through land use, through permitted or conditional uses. Or by not listing those use at all, meaning it would be prohibited.
Okay.
To be clear, Chris, you're talking about the downtown. You're talking about the potential MU3 area right now.
I'm sorry. Can you repeat that, Mr. Mamon? I didn't catch that.
I'm sorry. When you were asking us, you know, specific preference, maybe, maybe not a marijuana store, maybe not a drive-through restaurant. You're talking about the area, the, the new MU3 area, correct? Or you're talking the downtown?
Yeah. So for this new zoning district, are there certain land uses that you may think of that are permitted maybe in other commercial or even permitted in residential districts that you say, "No, this is not, not right for this site"? Or maybe this could be a conditional use here?
I was confused, because I thought we were talking still about downtown. So yes, I was having concern, but if the MU3, okay, is the new proposed, proposed area. Thank you.
Sure. Like, for instance, storage facilities also, probably not a use you're looking to have on the site. How did I guess, Sandy?
That, and I don't know that we need big box. I mean, the outlets right behind it, so that kind of seems like a lot of the larger locations should be there. I would see more things like, you know, bakeries or coffee shops, and I don't see drive-through. I don't think we want to encourage traffic there, because the access roads in and out really don't support that, so.
Sure. So just, just for your visual benefit and also for the, for the students on the call, I'm pulling up a section in the trial field development code that kind of speaks to this. So this is an example here on your screen of the neighborhood commercial zoning district. I'm not saying you have to use this as your starting point, but when we talk about permitted and conditional uses, this is kind of the general setup of how we have it. So again, not a general commercial, but this is more of a softer scale, smaller impact commercial. But there may be things there, like retail establishments, to Sandy's point just now, that have a square footage restriction on it. Service use is not to exceed a certain use. Office would be fine. So these are permitted, expected, anticipated, desired. Where you run into the conditional uses, maybe gas stations, community service uses, you know, things of that nature. So that's kind of what we're, we're looking for some guidance, and I think we got already a few points from you on that, Commissioner Lance. Are there any others? I've got another one for you all. Nursing home or memory care facilities. That's one that's going to probably come up as far as being contemplated, you know?
So you're talking about making those.
Permitted, conditional, prohibited. I mean, these are going to be questions that we're kind of starting from scratch. So what we would probably do is give you a cafeteria list of uses in November. And we would ask you really, "Do you really think these are permitted or conditional?" I mean, this is really code writing what we're doing.
On like a spreadsheet column now?
Yeah. Yeah.
That'd probably be the easiest way to do it.
That's fine, and we're prepared to, to set it up that way. We just wanted to see if we could get a head start tonight to see if there's anything, you know, you do not want tolerated on that site.
Don't have aluminum smelter?
No, we don't have aluminum smelters on it.
No gas stations either?
Gas stations?
Yeah, no. I mean, I, I don't know. I sort of see this as a resort look, because it's, you know, along such a scenic area, whether it's a hotel or, you know, nice condos, something that has a resort feel.
Yeah. What about, here's another one for you all, like entertainment facility. And entertainment facility, that, that can cut a big swath. It could be a bowling alley. It could be a casino. You know, those are the types of land use definitions that entertainment facility could, that could, could do. You know, are there restrictions or limitations in your mind as far as that? Because you, you hear that tired phrase, "Live, work, play." I really hate that phrase, but in a way, you have to think of this site as a live, work, play thing, because you're going to have the park element to it. You're going to attract people. And you're living and working. You're providing a mixed use there. So what are you tolerable with the play element of that?
Could it be something where there's a square foot limit? I mean, I don't, if there was something like a gym, but if it's, you know, some kind of 100,000 square foot gym, that's not appropriate, that everybody goes to and requires a lot of parking. But if it's something that just that community uses, then that's different. Does that make sense? I don't know that.
Yeah.
Want to draw a lot of people there to use entertainment facilities as much as provide entertainment for where they live?
Given that it was the most recent, I shouldn't say most recent, given that a while ago it was a relatively serious proposal, a, what we would call a destination big box store, what are your general feelings about that? That was a, a thought about 10 or 12 years ago that was contemplated for development.
Why not put that in the outlet mall?
Outlet mall. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I kind of think it would be okay. Sorry, we're talking over each other. I kind of think it would be okay to have, if you had a little big box there, like a Whole Foods, but then they had the coffee shop in there and the deli in there, and it was the destination point for all the residents that are living down there in the condos. And then they're not driving. They're just walking to their destination, grabbing their coffee, getting their sandwich, doing a little shopping. It could work.
Another question, though, I guess, looking bigger at that, though, what about something, and I'll, I'll use names, because that's helpful, even though we would not name names in the code, something along the lines of a Costco or a Sam's Club or a discount store, a major, major big box, not talking about just a supermarket here, a grocery store. At one point, I believe it was Cabela's was considering here, like a major 250,000 square foot, major destination retail store. You know, 10, 12 years ago, that was quite the rage. Today, maybe not so much. Are, are there strong opinions, one way or the other, on that?
I would think it would be really hard to do, because this thing is really set up for mixed use. And if you're going with one of those types, they're not really very conducive for mixed use. They're not.
At all. They're not at all. Yep.
And, and so I just don't see that being a, a fit.
I don't think big box is the answer to that piece of property anyway, because if a lot of the malls now that have those big box stores are now closing, so we'd have this big building that was not used, and we'd be stuck with it. So that's, I don't think that's the future. But we should have something like, like a little hardware store and a little, like a Whole Foods, and something where people can go and get what they need without having to drive somewhere, but without the big box.
This is really scalable retail opportunities.
Right, like banking and hotel, maybe, you know, but nothing, big box in that. We have enough of those around, close by.
And I would agree, smaller is better. I think some of it is, you know, the market's going to dictate the size.
Right.
And the size will be small.
Right.
One more question for, for the group on uses, too, somewhat related about scale, but maybe from a different angle. There is a trend, and the key word is trend. Is it going to be sticking? We don't know. But there is at least a trend of these ideas called of, of, what's called flexible space on the ground floor. And they're basically maker spaces, where the, the activity is actually maybe more industrial or very, very limited or boutique manufacturing on the property. And in some cases, they are actually live-work type arrangements. So the closest thing we probably have to that example is what you guys approved about a year ago with the coffee roastery downtown that's going to be set to open here in a couple of weeks. That is technically what required a conditional use permit to go into that spot. The, the use is really limited manufacturing. They are quite literally roasting coffee. There is an effluent. There is an impact, but it was mitigated accordingly through the conditional use permit. There's a suspicion from a lot of savvy people from, who work in commerce, they feel like that is a increasing trend. Is that something you would be comfortable with on that site?
Chris, if I may, and this is also for my colleague, Commissioner, it, I'm starting to become, having the impression that maybe instead of starting to talk about this use, yes, this business, no, this, it seems to be more relevant to try to figure out, at least find a compromise or an agreement, because we seem to be somewhat in agreement, my, my colleagues that spoke before me, seems to be in agreement that,
Right.
decide what the flavor really of this area is. Obviously, it's a mixed use. We know that. And so all of us, once we spoke, we spoke about, Commissioner Vittern said, you know, "I, I can have the grocery store, but with the, with the coffee shop inside, with the, with the small bookstore, maybe." So we're talking about small community. Commissioner Glenn said the same. Actually, Commissioner Glenn, you use a wonderful word. You did, it was, you're going to use like a spa, but you say you're visioning this in a specific way. And Commissioner Preakin, the same, you know, "I, I don't want the big box." And I feel the same. This is a great opportunity. To me, it's almost an extension of the downtown. A small fabric, you know, very livable space. So I, by, I think when we start to agree on the flavor, on the look, then by process of elimination, some of the uses, some of the scale are going to be eliminated. Instead of just going, "Yes, this, yes, this, no." It's difficult, at least I find it difficult to, to commit myself at this point, because I don't know yet what it's going to be looking like. And once, once we know what it's going to be looking like, it's going to be easy to, to rule out things that we don't want to.
I agree. And they also, trends change from year to year. What's trendy now may not be trendy next year or the year after. So we have to be, like, I agree with Mr. Mamon that we are, Mr. Mamon, that we have to be real careful and make sure that the flavor, like you said, is what we're looking for.
And on that same token, we have to be careful that we're not leaving them wanting more because we've excluded it.
Right. True.
And if you're looking for variety, how about an ice skating rink? Go on, and Lloyd's Center is shrinking, going away. I think the nearest one would be Sherwood or Vancouver. And I don't know if we still have a hockey team or not in Portland, but they would need a place, got to draw a crowd.
Yeah, they're usually in the Coliseum, aren't they? Where are hocks?
They're in the Coliseum, yeah. But even just a training facility or, or even a recreational facility. Sure.
That goes, that goes back to your entertaining type facility. What if a Topgolf says they want to come in there? You know?
What is the what? I'm sorry?
I said, what if a Topgolf said they want to come in here? That'd be a pretty big entertaining.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's a fair one. Yeah, Topgolf, for those of you who are not familiar, it's basically a, a driving range meets an arcade type thing. It's, it's a golf driving range, but a very.
It's a bar.
Fancy. They've got bar, there's entertainment stuff, there's pool tables, other things. It's, it's quite fun. There's one out in Hillsborough, right, right around the airport, right off 26th. A good way to spend an evening. I agree with you there. But, you know, that actually, it, it may sound a little ridiculous, but it has been contemplated in this region for that. But, you know, it, it doesn't even have to be Topgolf. What if it was a indoor water park or even an outdoor water park? I mean, that's what we're talking about with entertainment. I mean, that could even cover casino for that matter. I mean, I think we have to admit that that could be a possibility that might be on the table for any of those uses that we just shared. So at some point, you have to be careful with what you're truly comfortable with.
Right.
You might be comfortable with an ice skating rink, but you may not be comfortable with an amusement park.
I would think, and I don't want to, I agree with Commissioner Ramone, you know, about limiting individual things, but boy, I think a casino would be a tough lift in this community. Given the past couple of elections.
Yeah. Well, what we'll do, just because I know we're wrapping up, coming closer to nine, we, we will definitely get a table ready for you all so that you can kind of checkmark as part of your package, remember. Were there any other just general questions, comments, concerns about the need for the zoning district or anything else that should be talked about beyond height use and justification?
Traffic. Traffic would be my, this 257th is a major collector. And we get, I mean, it's already stark, and 257th is at any given, usually in the evening hours, not so much in the morning, but in the evening hours, it's backed up almost to 24th Street. So, I mean, we just have to be real careful to, again, with traffic in and out.
I was just going to say, when you talk about things like entertainment and you're thinking like a casino, I think if that one gets really tough, we would use the deed process at that point.
Potentially. I mean, there are things you could do. What, what is a little bit unique is we're talking by and large about what is currently city controlled, not directly city-owned, but city-controlled property. So as any seller could arrange with another private party or buyer, you can indeed restrict certain things. It doesn't have to be in the zoning. But for the purpose of getting a preparation for a sale, having zoning in place certainly can go a long way.
Just thinking that gives you a little flexibility.
Potentially, for sure.
Okay. Anything else, guys? We'll look forward to seeing that.
Yeah. So just quickly for a department report, if you're ready for that.
Rent burden first.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, we need to talk about rent burden. My apologies. The rent burden meeting, we do have scheduled for you all on December the 2nd. That is typically a CAC evening. In the past, that CAC has agreed to be effectively the host for it. What is different, of course, this year is you guys, through your work with the Housing Committee, have gotten very much into housing policy. What's also different is probably the format of this meeting is going to have to change to some degree. You're not really going to have an open house in this COVID world. So I think while we can have a discussion on the 2nd, and it can be a Zoom discussion for sure, and you can invite the public to it, are there other ways of outreach or other things you need to hear beyond what the state requires us to talk about that you would want to know or glean from, from, from this topic? And remember, 40% of your renters are in fact rent burden, meaning they pay more than 30%, in some cases, more than 50% of their take-home pay on housing.
I was kind of hoping we were going to get to take the lead on that since we've. I was kind of hoping we were going to get to take the lead on that since we've done the housing needs analysis.
Which I think can be arranged. I don't, I don't suspect that'll be a problem.
What time will this meeting be?
We've started it before at 6:00, we can do 7:00, whatever this group is largely comfortable with.
Obviously 6:00.
We can do 6:00.
You guys do 6:00? That be okay? Anybody have problems with 6:00? Going once, twice, 6:00? Quite informative, really is.
Yeah, sometimes very surprising what people are comfortable with sharing. We do get personal testimony, which is, in some cases quite moving, in some cases quite illuminating, but, or sometimes both. But it's not an easy topic, it's a very difficult topic, and we're not the only, of course, community in the state that's dealing with the issue. I think everybody's trying to spin their wheels for a solution.
No, and what I think is really positive is you don't see a lot of finger pointing.
Right.
You know, they understand where everybody's at and just trying to, trying to navigate.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
All right, so we'll prepare for 6 o'clock on the 2nd then.
Okay. Okay, department.
Sure. As you can see on the call, one of, one of our department items is on the call, and that is Troutdale's participation with the University of Oregon in the Sustainable City Year Program. I guess if, if you so choose, if any of the students or John, if you want to talk as a professor of these students, a little bit more about the program or the course or anything you heard tonight of interest, I would yield the floor to you if you all want.
Sure. Hi, everyone. Thank you for this meeting and for having many of our students on from the University of Oregon. I'm an assistant professor in engaging diverse communities at University of Oregon, and I've did planning for 20 years, plan review, historic preservation, affordable housing, economic development, a lot of work with immigrant businesses. And so this is my second year here in teaching, and this year I'm teaching the introductory course, our introduction for planning practice and principles. And so I'm really excited, we've got a small cohort this year, about 16 students, a good number of them are on our call today, and for various reasons. The first reason is we've been partnering with the city of Troutdale with Chris and Amber, and it's been a great partnership. The Sustainable City Year Program is something we do at the University of Oregon that's gotten national and international attention. What started over 20 years ago in the School of Planning Public Policy and Management as a way to do more community-based engagement and applying what we're teaching in our introductory core classes with smaller cities all across Oregon, we started getting tapped by different universities, large public flagships, large other state universities saying, that's a cool thing you're doing there in Oregon, is there a way we can do that here? So the people who started it, my colleagues started helping other universities do that. Now it's become this international thing, and we've got this huge network. Many years ago, the New York Times listed it as one of the most tried and true, true community-based partnerships between a university and city clients and other nonprofit groups. So it's exciting to work with Troutdale on this aspect of that. When we approached Troutdale, Chris and Amber had told us about the Town Center Plan and some of the different opportunity sites. Me teaching the introductory class, I also have a colleague teaching a class called Planning Analysis, teaching all of our planning students how to do the nuts and bolts, different things on software, graphics, housing assessments, economic development plans. And then our other class taught by a member of the LCDC Commission and the Housing Stability Commission Council, Headout de Sandoval, and he teaches a class called Human Settlements. It's a planning history class. So all three of our classes come together to do this big final project. Our term is 10 weeks, but it's really kind of eight weeks, given the first week and the last week are introductions and final presentations. And so we're working on opportunity site seven, and we've got three teams of students of about four or five, all looking at how to think about affordable housing in a home forward, and County of Multnomah owns that property there already. What my students are working on is really thinking about how to look at it from three different angles. One is how do you build housing affordability there with different policy innovations and with different design innovations and other case studies related to racial equity? Another group is looking at it from climate justice perspective, and another group is looking at it from housing instability. And so those are the three lenses that are informing what our student projects are for this class. And so today, we actually did a big lesson on zoning, and I knew some students were going to come to this meeting, and it just so happened that you covered zoning. So I'm excited about that, and I'm excited that our students are able to learn more about how this looks like, especially since many of them are coming from other small towns in Oregon, or from the larger Portland metro, or other larger cities across the United States. The last thing I'll say is, students are also looking for planning meetings as they're working on an assignment, doing an observation of what are the nuts and bolts of a planning meeting, how do those work, what gets discussed, what's the format of all of those, since many of them will go on to work for cities and run these like Chris and Amber are doing tonight. So I'll stop there, and I'll see if any students have anything they'd like to share or ask if we have time, and that's okay. And if there are any students who want to talk, I think you can just unmute yourself or share your video if you do. I'm not seeing anyone unmute.
Oh, there's one.
Okay. Two? Oh, can you unmute yourself too?
Can you unmute him?
Can you hear it too?
Can you hear me now?
Sure. We can hear.
A little bit, yeah, if you can speak a little louder, there you go.
Oh, you're.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for, for the presentation. It's been very enlightening to see how all of this worked out because we just been through a zoning exercise, and we are currently conducting a mock, a mock zoning assignment on where to ask for a zoning change or asking for a conditional use. So it's very relating. Thank you so much for the presentation.
I've structured all the assignments based on Troutdale and the zoning code and the comp plan in Troutdale. And so all the assignments, the first assignment was reviewing all the plans for the city of Troutdale. This current assignment is doing a zoning memo related to a development group that I fictitiously have, that I don't really, looking at how that would work with mixed use housing on the site, would that work or not, as they're looking at all of the different facets that go into making a decision as a staff planner and writing these types of reports. Future memo, future projects will look at case studies, everything linking to Troutdale to help students at the end work on this larger report and presentation that they'll be giving in the second week of December, of December, yeah.
Excellent.
Cool. Thank you again.
Okay.
So beyond that, and John and students, thank you for joining us tonight. That was an unexpected gift that you all could come along and clap. We were very optimal in our timing with your curricula. The other thing to make mention on a lighter note, I guess even beyond our zoning discussion, we talked about this site. This site does now have a temporary disc golf course that has been positioned out there. So if anybody wants to go out on the site and wants a little recreational opportunity at a socially distanced and appropriate level, now's a great time to go out there and check it out before the rains hit and make it a little bit less attractive to go out there, or the wind for that matter. So please check that out. The other bit of news too to share with you is that the city, along with Fairview and Wood Village, was a recipient of a $200,000 TGM grant, a Transportation and Growth Management Grant from the State of Oregon. That is basically your state tax dollars that were coming back to this area, and that is to look at potential for road profile designs along Halsey Street. It's a continuation of the Halsey Street corridor planning efforts. The idea really, Troutdale's particular interest is why we should be excited about this, is it provides a really good way to consider future pedestrian and bike connections to Edgefield in particular, one of the big gaps that we have where we really have a disconnect between McMenamin's property and the balance of the city, where we don't have that. So this is not necessarily a declaration of war, it's not a declaration of war on cars, we're not banning cars from Halsey Street, nothing like that. Really, we're just trying to see how we get more options for people to get to and from, to connect between the cities. And to see with our huge right of way width on Halsey Street, if there's a better way maybe to design the road to make it more conducive and more attractive for just cars, maybe pedestrians and bikes on a separate path, maybe other forms of transportation beyond that too. So not a redesign of any property, not a rezoning of property, but really looking at what's in the right of way and how to improve it to get around town better. And Amber, unless I'm forgetting anything, I think that's it from the department report.
Oh, one thing I think is different from our last meeting is that we've hired Brenda. So she's our new.
Say that, I couldn't remember if that was before or after we had done that, yeah. Thank you for that.
I don't think we've mentioned it yet, yeah.
Okay. And you should notice, of course, Amber, who's on our call too, Arini is very close to her baby arriving, so Amber is going to be with us for a few months, helping us staff that. Arini has not given birth yet, but that'll be in the next week or two. She's doing well and sends her regards, she's at another meeting tonight. But to help us out too, in the interim, we've also hired Brenda Valdez, she is an assistant, administrative assistant, you probably got the email from her for this meeting tonight. We'll try to get her on a meeting eventually, so you all can meet her digitally as well. She's been a nice addition, and we're happy to have a really good team on board to help serve you all. Thank you for that, Arini.
Amber, we look forward to working with you in your new role.
Yeah, it's good to be back. It's been a while since I've been at a planning commission meeting, so I'm happy to be working with you all again.
Looking forward to it. Only thing I want to add is, you know, when you look back at this property, when it was the wall polary and the cold storage, and then the sewage treatment plant, this is just a great opportunity and a great time for Troutdale to turn a page.
About the fertilizer there, haven't we?
Yeah. I just remember how bad it used to smell. But no, I think it's a great time for.
Decent opportunity.
Yeah. It is. Like we won't see probably again. Okay. Does anyone have anything before we adjourn? No? Okay.
And move your journs.
Second.
Oh, they're all over that, okay. And with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Night, everyone.
Thank you, good night.
Night.
Have a good one.